Good evening, everybody.
This is the town of New Canaan Town Council. Public hearing, it's a special public hearing. It's Wednesday, December 7th at 6:00 PM. Tonight's meeting is a statutory meeting. And as, as far as the agenda goes, we're going to do a roll call and then do a pledge of allegiance and then. That's okay. That's all right. We'll, we'll do our own, we'll do our own pledge. All right. So let's stand up and do a pledge of allegiance and we'll get started.
There's one person, there's one boy out there.
Oh, is it? All right. If he's there, well, let's get him in here. All right. Yeah, bring them in. Let's go. Hey, welcome. Come on up.
Right about here. And if you just wanna, you know, we'll start.
What's your name first? Hi Gabriel, welcome.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming.
All right, we're gonna rise and do the pledge. Yes, it's a town council. All right, Gabriel, here's our flag up here. All right, Gabriel, I gotta, since you made the trip, I gotta ask you a couple of questions. So come on over here. Let's see what you got here. Are you, uh, what rank are you? Scout, well.
Well, I just started like two months ago.
Yeah, good, good. So far, so good. Good.
What grade are you in, Gabriel?
Now, which, what school? Are you at Saks? And great, that's okay, good. All right. Well, welcome to the town council and thank you for coming. And we want to thank your mom too for bringing you. Thank you, mom. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Great holiday season. Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Bye.
See you later. Thanks again. Bye bye.
Bye.
All right, uh, we need a roll call. Mark.
Yes. Robin Bates Mason.
Here.
Rita Batino.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
He's absent.
Mark Jimskey here. Steve Carl.
Here.
Luke Kaufman. Mike Mora.
Here.
Maria Naughton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Ormond.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Penny Young.
Here.
We have a corner. Thank you, Mark. All right. As I said earlier, this is a public hearing. We will take input from the public. They're welcome to speak on the proposal for this parcel, sale of parcel K on Cherry Street. Public hearings intended to meet the public hearing requirement of Connecticut general statutes seven dash one sixty-three E. Uh, you know, again, we're here tonight to discuss the sale of a small sliver of property called parcel K on, on Cherry Street. So with that, I'm gonna have Tiger kick off the meeting. He's gonna have a small presentation. He says he has about four slides to run through. So Tiger, if you'll take it away.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Can everybody see the, uh, screen?
Yes.
All right. I'll zoom into it after, but let me do, I'll do the presentation first and then I'll kinda go back out. So parcel K is a very small piece of land, four hundred and forty-eight, excuse me, square feet. Um, on Cherry Street near Bertis. Point zero one acres. The market value and sale price is thirty-one thousand dollars is an appraisal. Cost associated with that for total sale price of thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three, four seventy-five. Give you a little history as to how it started. Um, it was because of the proposed extension of Cherry Street. You can kinda see Cherry Street off here to the left. And then the proposed, um, extension that exists now all the way down to East Avenue. And in this, uh, sale, there was actually three parcels that were, uh, that were acquired from Raymond Farady. Parcel K, which is shown in yellow. Parcel M in red and parcel O. Sorry about that. The, uh, so you can see those three parcels were part of this larger parcel here in the corner. Um, and these were purchased from Mr. Farady for the construction of Cherry Street. After Cherry Street was constructed, this last piece here, this piece here is a little bit unused and unnecessary for, uh, for the town itself. The developer at Bertus, twenty-one, twenty-three Bertus came forward, wanted to purchase, uh, the, the, the land themselves. They actually thought they owned it originally, but then in, in view, they noticed that this parcel, which is actually integral to their entire project, was necessary, um, for their use. They came forward with the request for a purchase. We had it appraised. Uh, it was the, the market value was thirty-one thousand dollars. As I mentioned, we necessarily don't have any use for it. At forty, four hundred and forty-eight square feet and, uh, we'd like to dispose of it and, uh, and sell it to, uh, twenty-one, twenty-three, uh, twenty-one, twenty-five Antana Bertis. So we'll see. I can zoom in and kinda show you a little bit better of, uh, of a view of it. But here it is, here, this small piece that was associated necessarily with the parking lot, the AT&T parking lot. Um, that we were leasing for, for, uh, parking in the downtown area. But this small piece here, we don't have any use for. I don't have any questions or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll open up to some questions from the council. Um, anybody have any questions, Christina? Oh, microphone.
Hi Tiger, this is not, um, a criticism on you. It's a comment on the process. The town council was never advised of this prior to, and to my knowledge is the first selectmen in the board of selectmen, who would kick off to the town council, authority or permission for the sale of any property before it gets this far. I'm concerned that we would set a precedent whereby a town employee would sell a parcel of property against what the town council has, uh, in the past, in the eighties, when we did sell municipal land, has set as a process. So therefore, I don't think that we should, um, hold a hearing. I think that we need to discuss it among the members of town council and come to a decision whether or not this land is of any value presently or in the future going forward. I, I just have a problem with the way in which this is being handled. I don't see the first selectmen here. And I find it disturbing that the presentation has gone through PNC, has gone through the buyers, the town has retained an ass, um, an assessor or, um, a broker to establish its price. And according to the state, um, statutes, we are required not only to hold a public hearing, but also required for the town council or another body, uh, to establish what the process is for bidding. This is one price that's basically set by an appraisal. And I think that it's unfair to the public for us to dispose of any municipal property without the proper procedures in place.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for Tiger while we have him?
Yeah, I would just wanna kind of echo what Christina said. And again, Tiger, nothing against you, but you know, the first I've heard about this is just recently. Are we required to bid this out? I mean, I don't know if our town attorney's on the call here, but I don't know. Shouldn't this be bid out? I mean, if we just were, if the town was approached by the developer, um, you know, in some kind of bilateral communication with, I don't know who in the town. Um, you know, when did that happen? How did it come about? You know, do we have any correspondence, any communications emails? Do we have proposed leases? Shouldn't there have been an executive session? I get it. It's four hundred something square feet and why make a big deal out of it? But that's not the point. You know, it's like the camel under the no, uh, the note, the camel's nose under the tent, right? Next, what's the next bigger project? You know, when did this all start? Was it bid out? Did it need to be bid out? You know, maybe there was someone else who would have liked to have been on it. I, I would like to at least know those, those questions just to preserve the integrity of the process. And I think overall, you know, my time on the town council, I, I, I feel like it's, you know, more and more things are just kinda coming up to us in the last minute. So I think we need to address this process moving forward for us now as a town council who currently constitutes it, but into the, you know, in perpetuity, quite honestly. You know, I don't wanna approve anything when I'm, I'm getting it at the last minute and it's always, you know, seems to be presented as a fait accompli, like here it is. So don't waste my time. Let's just get to it, vote yes, and let's move it along. I, I really just don't like how this process has played out. With that said, I mean, it, it sounds reasonable. I mean, I, I don't know if there was a market study on the, on the square footage. Uh, if that's a fair market value, I just don't know. I don't know, you know, I'm sure it's, I know it's an easy, you know, calculation, but it's just being told to us. And Tiger, I hundred, if you're telling me that's what it's worth, I hundred percent believe it. I believe what you're telling me. Again, this is nothing to do with you, Tiger. It has everything to do with the process. So I don't know if my colleagues feel the same way, but that's how I see it.
Thanks, Mike.
There was an appraisal done, um, just so you're aware, yeah. Vimy Associates did it. They did it in the entire appraisal. They, they set the fair market value at thirty-one thousand dollars. At point zero one acres, it comes out to three point one million dollars an acre. So it was given to us by, uh, by Peter Vimy. And that was what we presented to the, uh, to the potential buyer as the price. And they accepted that price and then they paid, they'll pay for the appraisal costs associated with it, which was two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total of thirty-three, four seventy-five. So the town will have no expenses in it other, um, other than our legal expenses. Excuse me.
Okay. I mean, you know, again, Tiger, I believe what you're telling me a hundred percent. It is nothing to do with you. It's a completely separate issue. I mean, it'd be nice if we saw the appraisal. It would be nice to see if we could see, you know, I don't know, you know, the negotiations back and forth. Who proposed that number? Did the developer come to us and say, this is what the appraisal is? Here's what I'm gonna offer you. You know, I, I don't know because we didn't have, I guess, a bid process. I, I just don't know. So again, it's more about preserving the integrity of the process and kind of not having such a, some kind of process played out where we're just not understanding how we got to where we're at. And that's my, my concern overall. And I see, uh, Attorney Lamont is on the phone. So I, uh, zoom. I mean, was this required to be bid out or what's the story?
Of Lamonte from Birch and Moses. With regard to bidding it out, I view this as a, um, very unusual, uh, circumstance where I don't think it's plausible that anyone else would, would bid on this, uh, wedge. That is along the street. Uh, has no other permissible use. And is only a value really to the, uh, to the property owner to whom the town is selling it.
So there, I, I, listen, I, again, I understand that and I'm not trying to make a, a mountain out of a molehill. I mean, it sounds like it should be sold and that's the right price. So let's just get it done. But I, I just need to understand and I don't know if I understood your response was aside from the fact that this developer, it really has no use to anybody other than this developer, but do, does the statute require us to, to bid? Because if it does, then we can't act ultra veris as a town council and approve a land transaction that is, is, it contravenes statute. So I don't know, but it may very well may not. I just don't have the answer to it.
That, that question I can, can answer. There is no statutory requirement to put it out to bid.
Is there any requirement, any legal requirement, statutory code, regulation, rule, charter, ordinance, any, any legal requirement that, that has, has a requirement to bid it is the only thing. I just don't know the answer to it. That's all.
I'm not aware of any requirement to bid it.
Okay.
Thanks, Christina.
Um, I, I beg to differ Attorney Lamonte because my understanding is that the statute said a precedence that you must have a public hearing and that it has to be publicly bid.
I have the copy of the statute. Um, I can just, um, remark that I spoke with Nick Lamonte about this at length as well. And, um, I was told that, um, in the scenario of disposition of town-owned property, the requirements are that a public hearing must take place before the town council. The Planning and Zoning Commission must have an eight twenty-four review, which has happened. And the Board of Selectmen has to approve a purchase and sale agreement, and that has happened as well. The last piece of the process that you're referring to is the public hearing.
If you go back to the town council meetings in nineteen eighty and I can send them to you, the town council sets the rules of how a property is going to be disposed of. And we did that with the telephone building across from the library.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just telling you what Nick Lamonte told me today when I, when I, not even today, the other day, when I questioned him on exactly what the process was gonna be. And he went through the charter and, and, and I've got, let me just pull the.
The fact is that the town doesn't need the money to sell it. And I think that Attorney Lamonte is in a precarious position to assume that we would have no other use. So the only one that would benefit would be the buyer. That's outrageous. You're supposed to representing the town.
Uh, you know, I think I asked Lynn, uh, earlier today, Lynn, can you just weigh in from a planning perspective? The, the piece of property that we're discussing, this parcel K, you know, is there any other use for it? I mean, I, I, I mentioned, you know, possibly things like signage in the future or, uh, plantings, park benches, things that, that the town would, um, wanna put in there. Whether, you know, anything from a valet stand to a, you, you know, your imagination can run wild, including a lemonade stand. I mean, is there anything that would get through P and Z in that particular spot, given the fact that, you know, we're, we're redeveloping that whole street, basically? What, what, what could you actually put there if you were to buy it?
Um, so, um, in answer to your question, um, probably little to nothing because of the size of it. And then, um, it, it's a remnant parcel that was part of an eminent domain taking in order to create the, um, the connection between Main Street and East Avenue. And Tiger showed the map, um, number five, four, seven, six, which is, was recorded with the town clerk, which actually shows it. And there were three remnant parcels out of that eminent domain taking that weren't given to specific property owners. Um, the parcel, the town had no knowledge that we actually owned that parcel. Um, until this, the current owner for, um, then Ventana, um, twenty-one dash twenty-five actually purchased the property. And, um, just like Attorney Lamonte said, I mean, obviously the council can make a determination if they need to, um, there, there's no, there's no other abutting property owner except for the new owner of the property. And, um, from a planning and zoning perspective, th- there's probably little to nothing that could be placed on that property without, uh, without some sort of variance or, um, or, or like approval, but, but there's nothing viable. Like you can't put a building there. I mean, you might be able to put a porta potty there, but, uh, you know, there's nothing really that you would put there. It's used right now as a landscaping space.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
Robin.
We do. Yeah, we have the, we do have the documents. Uh, Robin.
So Tiger, um, since what was it, nineteen seventy-five, this was done, who's been, and the town didn't know we had this, who's been maintaining it? Cause it is landscaped.
Yeah, well, we plowed the lot, you know, we cut the grass around because it's, 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 you know, considered portion of it's inside the right of way. You know, the AT&T lot is right there. That's the, uh, that's the space that it sits and the grass in front of it. So we cut that. And then, uh, the, the neighboring parcels took care of it as well. AT&T themselves maintained their parcels. So their landscapers would, would cut that grass. Um, since they own both the building and the, and the parking lot. But, uh, you know, to Lynn's mention, you know, we had heard rumors that we possibly owned a piece of land in that area, but we didn't know we owned it. Per se, we just, we knew that, you know, there was a, there was a parking lot there that we had to, we had to plow and maintain. And other than that, we had no knowledge of the fact that we owned it.
Excuse me, Steve. That parcel K is including the Open Space and Conservation Commission report that's with your office and also filed at the library, which Kevin is very familiar with.
Thank you.
Other questions?
It looks like in the town charter, there's a rule for tangible personal property and it refers to a process where uh, you get an appraiser, but then it has to go to a public hearing and then open bid. And it's anything that's valued at X amount and above. So I'm wondering.
What's the X amount? Because.
It's like five thousand dollars. It's not.
Oh, ta, this is tangible property, you're saying?
Yeah, that's tangible.
Yeah. Oh, so like, so even like a vehicle or a machine or something like that.
Right. And yeah, I was, it was, I didn't understand exactly what, if this, cause tangible, it said it can be touched, felt. The only difference that made it different than real estate is that it said it could be moved, which this you can't move. But there are criteria for that. So if someone decided that some piece of land in town had no other purpose, was only beneficial for one thing, like what are the rules to do this? I know it's just a little piece, but what if it was a big piece that someone decided would serve no purpose other than to the person who wants to buy it? Like it seems there need to be some parameters on how you dispose of.
That's the signage too, that's put out there. Um, there are stakes there that were.
Well, that's the signing. So that's good. It's just the bidding. To me, it's like the bidding thing is missing.
So it's had the two weeks of.
What paper?
So that's following the statute for dispose, uh, sale of municipal property. So our town charter says there's that extra piece of a bid, sealed bids. So that's what I would just worry about. Are we doing something? You know, if we don't understand the full set of rules, this could be done again for something else.
Well, yeah, I mean, you don't wanna set a precedent for, you know, this is obviously such a small piece, but you know, if some, if somebody decided they were gonna, in some future time, somebody decided they were gonna sell an actual major piece or a building and, you know, you, you definitely would want the protection of the council to hear that as well.
Or, or a section of a, a small section of a larger piece of land.
Right, right.
Is there any difference?
Right. If you carve it out, useless.
Said, oh, well, that's not useful, but more useful for you. Yeah, I think it's to your point.
We just got our hand up.
Really? Raise your hand.
But yeah, just a quick question. Has this happened before where there was a, like, you know, a small piece where we weren't aware that we owned it? And like, was there ever a similar situation?
Yeah, we had a piece on Luke's wood that, uh, whereby the, the frontage actually extended, the, the, the right of way line extended into the property and then came back on a ninety-degree angle at the next property line. And that property was actually owned by, uh, I believe the, the water company itself. So the, the right of way line, at that one point in time, they were thinking about changing the alignment of the road. Um, and, uh, the person who owned it wanted to put in a, uh, wanted to put in a, um, uh, a stone wall, right? So they, and they wanted to align the stone wall with the stone walls that were on the adjacent property. But he couldn't because it was gonna jut into his property. And he came to us and asked for it to, uh, to purchase it. And we sold it to him. Uh, it's a decade ago or so. Um, but there was no, that gentleman would have been the only person who would, uh, would want it. And we went through the same process. We don't believe we publicly bid that. I think we did this exact same process, which is we got it appraised. Um, we had the appraisal similar to this. The Vimy Associates was working for the town. Um, the buyer is just reimbursing us for the cost because we don't feel that we should have to pay for those costs. They're looking to buy the parcel. We're not looking to sell it. And then that individual went through the process, um, visited, you know, the, the town council voted and we had a public hearing for that. And then, uh, and then.
Similar to what we're doing right now.
Very similar because it would have only been that one, exact same problem would have only been for use for that, for that parcel. It was the frontage of that parcel. So, um, you can imagine that no one else, you know, someone else buys it. It's a bad situation for that, for the person that's there. It's a small sliver. So.
Yeah, I remember that too. I do.
Right. So, you know.
I'm only asking because, um, I just wonder like how unusual this is because I agree, I mean, I, I agree with the previous comments from Christina and Mike. I, it's not about the, this particular issue. It's like, okay, like we're setting a precedent and, and a bigger piece comes available and it's just not, we're setting a precedent for a process that isn't, um, as thorough or as transparent. That's what my concern is. Um, I'm also kinda concerned. Do we, are there other parcels out there that we may not know about? Um, should we be doing some sort of, I don't know, extra due diligence to identify any other parcels that may be out there?
The, uh, I, I, I don't know if we would have many. There, there might be some of the remnant parcels like this throughout the, um, we did dispose of one, uh, off of Douglas Road. It was Hope Street. Hope Street didn't go anywhere. It was, uh, shared between two properties. Um, it would have connected Douglas with the, with the road adjacent to it. I believe that's Gower. But it never, it, it stopped and there was a parcel on the opposite side that prevented the road from going further. And the residents approached and we actually split the baby and gave the, uh, the parcels to both sides. I don't even know in that case that if there was a sale. I think we just necessarily, they'd been maintaining it themselves for so long of a period of time. And then they had an access driveway over it. And I believe that it was, uh, given to the people at that time. I don't even know if there was a sale. I'd have to look back, but we don't have many, um, areas where, um, we own the land and, and, uh, in situations similar to this where it would be integral to another, you know, piece of property and that we would, we, uh, wouldn't need it.
Thanks, Tiger. The, Nick, a question for you. Uh, the most recent example that I can think of where we started down this path is when we talked about the Vine Cottage and talked about putting that out to bid and talked about the possibility of selling that. And we never actually got to the point where we had any, I think, you know, it was COVID at the time or whatever. Something happened where we weren't able to get correct bids in or whatever. And that's as close as we've recently gotten to a situation where uh, we would be selling a major piece of property. So in terms of the council's, uh, role in that, uh, you know, I, I would think historically that the council would play a pretty important role in terms of being the gatekeeper as representing twenty thousand people, that we would be the ones that would ultimately say, yes, we accept this bid and, you know, vote to sell it. I mean, I, I can't imagine a scenario where we would sell a major piece of property in town without it going through this body. And can you comment on that?
That's for you, Doug. You had said.
Oh, Doug, I'm sorry. No, sorry, Doug. Can you comment on that, Doug? I'm sorry.
Sure. Um, if I recall correctly, the Vine Cottage, um, property was put out to bid. I myself might have drafted the RFP for that.
Right, we put, actually.
Say again?
We put it out twice.
Twice, okay.
So that, so that point, you put out twice, let's take it to the next level. Let's say we put it out to bid and you had, you, you had a bid opening and you had four or five bids on this property. You have a, a sort of a winning bid. At that point, the next step in that process, as I would see it, is that it would come to the council. We would look at the bids, you would talk about it and then we would either decide to sell it or not, or am I mistaken?
You're, you're now referencing the Vine Cottage?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, that would have, uh, I imagine that the, uh, proposals or bids would have been evaluated. And then, uh, perhaps by a committee, I don't know. And then, uh, a recommendation would have been made to the town council. Um, for, uh, you know, based upon perhaps not only price, but other, uh, elements of the proposal for who to award, uh, the contract for sale to, or which proposal to accept.
And then there would be, walk us through the, the, the hearing process. We'd also have to have a public hearing for that, just similar to this and.
Well, that's exactly right. There would have to be a public hearing, a sign posted. You would also need, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, approval first. Um, and then after the, uh, town council approved the sale or before the town council approved the sale, I don't know that there's a specific order, the, uh, Board of Selectmen would have to approve the contract of sale.
The reason I'm asking is I just, I, I'd like to go on record as far as, and finish the conversation so that everybody here as we vote tonight, uh, or move this ahead. Were clear, if we did run into a situation where there was a larger piece, a much more important piece than, than a small little sliver like this, how exactly is that handled? Because we, you know, I've been on the council a long time, four terms, and we've never actually gotten to that point where we've actually sold anything like that as far as I can remember. But Penny, I don't know. Can you remember? Oh, Penny's not there. I, I just don't remember the way it works. And I think it's important that we discuss it and. the way it works. And I think it's important that we discuss it and go on record as far as how it works so that everybody's comfortable with it because that's part of the the, sort of the pause button here. This is something we could have done in five minutes, but you know, we, we don't want to set a precedent or, or, or change a process uh, for future transactions like this. So we just want to be perfectly clear as far as how this is gonna work. Christina?
Steve, uh, to your comment, if we vote on this tonight, knowing what the precedent has been set prior to in the eighties with the telephone building being sold, then we're creating a new precedent. And the new precedent is bound by the fact that we have a town employee that has gone through a process without our approval. The way the president stands now with the telephone building is that the first selectman was granted permission to explore the sale of a building. And then the first selectman went out and got appraisals on the property, three appraisals, I believe. Then they agreed that the town would be better off with the taxes received for that property rather than continuing to hold on to it because the building by that point was empty. So then the first selectman came back and I know all this by reading the minutes of the minutes going back to the town council way back. So then the the town council set the rules, said it was going to be by closed bid. A month later, they changed it, that it was to be auctioned in open auction, open bids to the highest bidder. Because the town council was concerned about transparency and the perceived notion that anybody could step in and buy something with a behind the closed door deal or something like that. So they retracted what they originally set out and they redid it. And there was a sale. It was held in public in the old auditorium. And Wadi was the one that ended up with the building. There were many bids. His was the highest. So if that is the precedent, why are we changing it? Because we had no knowledge until these documents came in that this was any idea. And at that point, that building was sold because the town decided that they would rather have the taxes on the property than continue to maintain it. What is our advantage to sell it? You can put a portable potty, you can put a bench, you can plant trees, you can continue to garden on it. But why are we selling it? Other than somebody wants it and we're doing everything possible. The same thing, we came very close with the Vine Cottage to selling it. I think we're going down a slippery slope that we're not going to be able to correct in the future. And I, I propose that we postpone this and talk about what the process should be. And I also propose that we open the charter and nail down these issues so that there is no future doubt as to the way it should go.
Mark?
No, no, I, I, I just want to make sure. Are we seeing everyone on the screen? Because I, you know, you, you mentioned Penny. She's there. I just don't think you can see her.
Um, she's got her video off.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, because we can't see their hands or, I don't know.
There she is. She's in the car.
I'm here. I'm, I'm in the car.
Just making sure everyone could speak.
Yes.
Um, I, I could just reiterate again, the, what I read to you was from the charter from Nick. Uh, in terms of the, again, I, I'm just reading you what he sent me, but the disposition of town on property, or there are three steps to the process. That there's a public hearing, there's an eight twenty-four review and there's a board of selectmen approval of the purchase and sale. Those are what he said to me today when I questioned.
That's for real property. That's not land or buildings.
Is that, is that
property?
Just town on property in general?
Well, these are, these are all, um, these were all different scenarios about real property. So acquisition of privately owned property by the town, disposition of town owned property, lease of private, privately owned property to the town, lease of town owned property to a private party. So it's all the different scenarios. And the scenario of disposition of town on property has the three caveats, the public hearing, eight twenty-four review and the purchase and sale.
This is from the, the statute, that statute, not charter. Is that in our?
That's charter, the statute.
I didn't see it in the charter.
So I was wondering.
It's, uh, well, I've got, he's got the references here, but the statute, it's quite long, but, um, this is the seven dash one thirty-three E, public hearing on the sale, lease or transfer of real property owned by a municipality. Legislative body of a municipality or any municipality where the legislative body is a town meeting or representative town meeting, the board of selectmen shall conduct or the board selectmen shall conduct a public hearing on the sale, lease or transfer of real property owned by the municipality prior to final approval of such sale, lease or transfer. Notice of the hearing shall be published in the paper with general circulation, which we did. Um, the municipality shall also post a sign conspicuously. I think it's been out there for three weeks, Tiger, on the property. Um, and then it just says that it doesn't apply to park land. Or foreclosure.
That sounds like it's from the, the state statutes. Okay, not the charter.
So what I read you, which you was, was all from the charter and referencing state statute. One sixty-three, which is what Nick had forwarded to me.
Do you have the section of the charter? I'm just.
Charter, C five dash nine, uh, C five dash eleven. Eight twenty-four is obvious. C twelve dash four, there's multiple sections that deal with all these different caveats.
So for Vine Cottage, then, I mean, that was sort of a precedent to accept bids. If there were bids for the.
We didn't approve it.
We didn't approve it, but it went out for bid.
But it wasn't without permission because Kevin said that he was the sole person uh, responsible and authorized to sell town owned property. And that created a discussion between some of us as to the role of the first selectman. It's outrageous.
Well, so somebody has to initiate, he's, you know, the first selectman is the executive in town. So someone has to begin the process and.
His, but his position is he comes back to the town council to ask for authorization to move forward. Not that he just goes on his own and he does it.
Yeah, it did, it did. This, this particular one went through the board of selectmen. And I can't remember if the Vine Cottage went through the board of selectmen or not, but we have to look back on that.
We never, we never brought the Vine Cottage to the board of selectmen because we never received an RFP, a proposal that was actually suitable. You know, there was, that was one that was, that we wanted to pursue. The majority of them were undervalued. You know, my understanding is the board of selectmen is the one that disposes of the property. The council has a hearing, but the board of selectmen has, um, authority to dispose of the property itself.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think tonight certainly it's, there's two, there's two parts of this. One is this is a small sliver of property that, you know, I don't think any of us are going to argue in terms of the value or, or but it's, it's the other piece of the process that we need to nail down. And that doesn't have to happen tonight. But we need to get that in writing and done, I think, you know, before this, I, I.
I can certainly invite Nick or Ira to a meeting to discuss the process going forward.
Yeah, because, I mean, that, to me, that's a big deal. Obviously, if this property was two acres on the corner of Maine and Elm that the town owned and we're selling this giant piece of property, you'd have a, a, you know, a, a town hall full of people, you'd have people online, you'd have a ton of input tonight, but obviously it's crickets tonight as far as this is concerned because this is a little tiny deal. But, you know, it gets to, the reason I brought the Vine Cottage up is because if that ever got to the point where the town council approved selling it, you may even see a referendum where people say, hey, I don't want to sell that piece of property. So, you know, there is a, I, I think there's um, certainly processes in place, but we need to nail down exactly what they are.
You know, I am speechless over, we have the town attorney who's supposed to be advising us. And the only advice he's given is to just sell it because he doesn't think that anybody else would want it. I think it's, it's the wrong message to send. He is here representing the town and he's not giving the town advice. He's already made a decision unilaterally that this should be sold because.
Excuse me, though, I, I, I'm not advocating for the sale of the property. I have no position on it. Um, the, the council is free to approve or reject the proposal to sell it. Um, I'm just advising as to the process and any questions about, uh, the proposal.
Thank you. All right.
Steve, maybe we just take it to a vote. I mean.
Yeah.
Assessing the temperature in the room, I, I don't think there's an appetite to approve it, but I could be wrong, but let's just get it to a vote.
All right. So, and does anybody want to finish up? Uh, we haven't heard from Hillary. Are you out there? Or Rita, anybody on Zoom want to weigh in? As we go around the room. So Rita, go ahead. Are you good?
Yeah, I would just say one, I mean, I, I want to separate this out because I'm, I'm upset with the process, but frankly, we were ready to sell this piece. We didn't even know we had it. So I think if, you know, I, I think there was an intent to, to give this property or to sell this property to the developer. So I get that and I, and I, I kind of feel for the developer. Probably no one really realized that they didn't have this piece. So my real issue, I, I just want to be on record. It's my issue is with the process, not this particular piece of land because I think I think we thought it was going to be sold, being sold to them anyway. And I don't know that we have any other use for it. So, yeah, so my objection is purely the process.
Thank you.
What I'd like to know.
Hi, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Maria.
Is there something we as a town council can say that will just fix the process so that we can do this within a week or so? Like, what would fix this?
Well, I mean, I think from what, I think what Christina's asking is that you, we have a, a formal bidding process and put, you know, put this out to bid. But I think we answered that question by saying, you know, we asked Lynn, what can you put there? And you really can't put anything there, so.
But, but still, someone might want to put a bench there. Like, just say someone wants to put a memorial bench and, and they really want that. Right now, no one even knows this is a town piece of land that's available for sale. So I'm just playing devil's advocate. Can you put a bid out and, and give it a week?
That's the signage and the advertise. Right. Advertise the fact that it was, that it was, this public hearing was taking place.
But did it solicit bids? I mean, does it, what does the sign say? You know, offers will be taken?
Because if it's. The town council is holding a public hearing on the sale, that, that basically your agenda.
But that doesn't say it's for sale, bids must be submitted by such a date.
No, but I'm just saying that would allow someone to come here and comment.
Maybe, maybe.
Steve, it's, it's, Steve, it's Penny. You know, for, for precedent sake, um, I think we probably should go through the process. Um, and advertise it, get bids, uh, if there are any that are forthcoming, but I think, you know, now that we've acknowledged and made aware of the fact that precedent could be a little dangerous. I, I think we should just go forward with, with a notice for sale.
The only, the only, if I might, the only problem that you have with that is that one, if you, if you looked at the document and the, the plans that have been approved by the planning and zoning commission for this, you'll get into, you could theoretically get into a predatory situation where someone, you know, bids high on this parcel because knowing that it's integral to the, uh, to the developer.
But that's, but that's not our problem or responsibility, Tiger. That's, that's the people.
I'm only pointing out that fact. And the fact that it's, you know, the fact that now we've opened bids, so to speak, right? Because it's a, was a thirty-one thousand dollar price that was accepted. Right? So that's all I'm saying. Playing devil's advocate on that side. That's all I'm saying. You, you're free to do, you're free to perform your will, however you'd like. That's all I'm mentioning. And, and the fact that we didn't know we owned and they came to us thinking that they owned it. And then when they went through the search, found out that we actually owned it, then they approached us to proceed at that point in time. We didn't look to sell this like Vine Cottage. This is a separate situation.
Okay, I, I, I call the vote on this. I think there's been a lot of discussion.
I, I agree, maybe just before we take a final vote, maybe the simple way here is if we had a written legal opinion from Attorney Lamonti's firm that said that there is no requirement under any, anything to bid this out. Uh, maybe the council would be more disposed to move forward with it. And maybe we can't get that opinion. I don't know, but to try to just move it along. And, and if we could get that and then put it on our agenda for next, whatever our next meeting is, I'm just throwing that out.
Next week.
Yeah, so. I kick legal opinions out quite quickly. So it's, it's possible. If.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. I, I just think everybody's gonna feel a little more comfortable, um, you know, going through a process like that. That's my vote.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the tonight satisfies the public hearing requirement.
Take this to next week and we can have the attorneys join us.
Yeah.
And, and.
Okay, I've got to sign off.
All right, thank you, Penny. Mike, do you want to say something? Yeah, Mike Sweeney's here from, uh, yeah, that's, that's fine. That mic works, Tucker, right?
Just for the record, uh, Michael Sweeney, I'm a partner at Carmody and Torrance in Stanford, also a Duquesne resident for the last twenty-five years. The application that was submitted by, uh, our clients through zoning, as Tiger describes, it was discovered late in the process that this little gore of land that lawyers call these gores uh, existed and we thought we owned it, but we didn't. So he brought to the attention of the town. We were completely transparent through the whole process. John Goodwin and all the folks on the commission uh, were made aware of this. And through their process, they determined both informally during the application process and also formally when they did the twenty-four referral that was consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And at least from their viewpoint, it had no impact on, on the plan of conservation and development. And they were quite happy to have it included in our application. So we did, we adopted this four hundred square feet of land in the application about where the, the driveway would come into the property. I don't know if you followed it, but I think it's, it's twenty-five units. The three affordable units are going to be created under the new affordable housing regulation that was drafted by the commission end of last year. So it's actually present sitting in that, uh, respect as well. They were adding to the affordable housing stock in town. For my purposes, uh, the title policies that were received by our client, I didn't represent them when they purchased. It describes the land. And it's not unusual to see these gores. You see them a lot. You know, like in Stanford or Norwalk, where huge developments are being done and these little pieces pop up from time to time. So not unusual, probably a little less usual in, in a smaller town. So we approached the town, uh, we spoke with the first selectman, we spoke with the board, we appeared before them guess last week. We also had our eight twenty-four referral. So just like, just so you know, then on behalf of our client, we're completely transparent through the process. And it has been incorporated into, uh, the application. So we would like to have it resolved. We told the town we would pay whatever the fair market value of the property was and we didn't object to that. And we're, we're quite willing to, uh, conclude in that, in that fashion. But the title policy that exists on the property, as you know, when you purchase, purchase a piece of property, just like on our homes, you get a title policy. And basically it's a little insurance policy that your title is good. It will be defended by a company if someone were to challenge that. Uh, what we have done is we're going to take this little gore of land and incorporate it into the existing title policy. So I have to give an opinion to our title insurance company because I act as their agent. So I went through the process as well. I went through the charter, I went through the statutes. Just from being around the town for a long time, uh, as my gray hair shows, uh, I've, I've noticed anecdotally this being done in the past. I was tangentially involved with the Luke's Wood sale that Tiger alluded to. Uh, also I've seen leases done over the years. I did a pro bono application years ago for the, um, let's skip, you know, the community, uh, daycare center on Old Norwalk Road. There's actually town land in there that, that's leased. And so this, there is precedent, this is the way you do it. Um, I have to give an opinion to the title insurance company that verifies that, yes, the process was done correctly. And of course, I'm willing to do that because I've looked at the statutes. Now, I can't speak to your process and what's the best way for you to approach it? Obviously, if you were selling a large piece of land, you would probably do it in a different fashion than this little spit that exists, uh, you know, on, on the arch, uh, that's, uh, uh, the, the extension of Cherry Street. But, um, the planning zone, uh, zoning commission has determined this is, this is not even a lot, never mind a non-conforming lot. It has no value or use except to our applicant. And, and the application is dependent upon that, you know, as Tiger points out. So I just want to give you a little background on that and let you know that my folks proceeded in a good faith and we're probably transparent with all town bodies and we've followed the processes. My folks proceeded in a good faith and we're probably transparent with all town bodies and we've followed the processes as we understood it. And as I understood it from the statute, so. I'm completely comfortable when the vote is taken by this council. We're hoping for tonight, but if not, that, um.
Does a, does a week, Mike, does a week give you any kind of hardship for the project at this point or is? A week is okay. It doesn't give you any hardship for, uh, timing or anything, right?
No, I just want to give you the, the, the background.
Okay, yes, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sweeney while we have him?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, um.
And I understand we're pushing it to next week, but. I mean, I, I'm in favor of selling it because it, it is a. It useless piece of land that. It's. Uh, that's part of their application, assuming we have what, what Mike. Talked about having. A written legal opinion.
Yeah.
That just makes everyone feel a little bit more comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't hear any objections from anybody tonight on the council as far as selling, you know, actually selling the property. So that's good. So I would, I would take that as a positive. It's more about looking in the mirror as far as how we're doing it. That's, you know, so.
Happy to approve it the minute we have.
Rita.
Rita, your hands up.
Yeah, I just, I, I just have a question about legal exposure and maybe I'm off base, but is there any legal exposure since we've approved it like? So planning and zoning approved these plans, assuming that that parcel was included. Is there due diligence required on our part to have known that? And would we be on the hook if the developer is then? You know, has hardship or is negatively affected if someone now takes advantage if we, you know, do it the right way and we bid this out? Like that would be my, another, just a legal question that I've had, that I, that I have.
Yeah, um. I would say that that would be something I would prefer to discuss in executive session.
Thank you. Anybody else? Comments, questions? Tucker, anything from you?
No, and I don't see anything.
Okay. All right, so, uh, it sounds as though we will, uh. Get this on our agenda. Our agenda meeting is tomorrow, so we'll, we'll put it on our agenda for next Wednesday evening. Uh, with the intent of. Discussing it further and hopefully we'll have some answers in terms of, um, overall process and does anybody? Does anybody want to volunteer to work on this between now and next week? Christina, anybody else?
To work on, sure, I'll help.
Yeah, Maria, okay, great, thank you. Christina and Maria are gonna, so if you just put together, you want to just put together like a, a one pager?
A one pager?
Yeah.
Do is set up a meeting with Nick and Ira and.
Oh, good, that's good.
So Steve, just to be clear, just so we're not rehashing this all next week and spending more time.
It's too.
I mean, we, we're clearly going to approve this. What? What is it that we're?
Well, so.
Want to set precedent, but I, I, I mean, can we? Set precedent?
We have already in the past. We're deviating from it by approving it as it's.
I would say clarify.
Clarify what.
The parameters for. Sale like, just like it is for tangible personal property, maybe we need some clarity on. Like a, a dollar amount, if it's under this, you don't have to bid if you choose.
Precedent though, I just, I.
Well, if, if, the reason we got into the selling of larger pieces, it's, it's selling real estate and it doesn't matter if it's a tiny. Carve out or a, or a, or a major piece of property, it all would have to happen the same way. You'd want it, you'd want it to happen the same.
I just want to be clear, so then. I think asking Christina to do is to basically. Write down what the process that we already have in place.
Well, have an understanding with, with our town attorney, exactly what is the, the process going forward? Or, you know, what do we have, what do we do the next time we are faced with this?
But, but my understanding is what I've learned tonight is that there's a. There's an issue with the. The first selectman acting as executive. In his capacity as the executive of the town and going out without approval from the town council. Are we trying to clarify that? That, that's his job, correct?
No, not according to the precedence on selling municipal property.
So that, so that's basically what we need for next week, just to approve this.
But getting back to that example, it's important to get back to that example from, you used for the telephone billing. At the time, was it Lou Moreno that was the, who was first selectman during that time? Do you remember who was?
Bach, I think it was.
All right, so, so whoever that person was. Had, had to, had to.
Chairman of the town council.
Well, no, first, first selectman had to initiate the, the sale and the conversation somehow. So that to me is Mark's point. It has to start there. I mean, that, that just is a natural way for it to start and it's just a matter of once that starts. The way that was handled, putting it, the telephone company, putting it into a town hall. Open bidding session where people are raising their hands, you know, and with an actual person bidding and having a gavel going once, going twice sold. I mean, that's a whole different scenario than turning in the way we have all. Come to think about real estate transactions where you actually write a bid down, it's a formal bid and you submit it. And then, and then you open the bids up.
But they did it that way at first and then amended the direction to the first selectman and said it had to be done by. Public auction because of the perception and I guess the, the opinion of the public. And the way that they wanted it because they thought that.
So the question is, was that a one time?
It's the only property that has been sold.
Okay, so that's the other question is, they, they may have created their own set of rules around that particular sale.
All I can do is summarize it and give you copies of the minutes so you can verify it. That's what.
There is no precedent. One is not a precedent.
Right.
And my problem here is that it's a such a small piece of land. That it, it, and it serves no use to anyone but one. That, that there is no precedent around that because. Maybe to Rita's point, we could go find all these little stub pieces of land and yeah, you'll, the only person that wants them are going to be the person next to it.
And maybe that's the exception that's created.
Right, but I, I'm not sure what we're gonna.
But I, I really believe like, and using that stone wall, um, example that Tiger used earlier. This is the stone wall. We're not talking about selling a building here. So to me, next, when we talk about this next week, it's two things. One is. Let's get the sale going and so people can move on and, and with their lives and get this, get this project going. Then it's up to us to internally look at how are we going to sell a major piece of property going forward? How is that happening? Because again, I don't hear any of us saying that we don't want to make this happen for this. You know, we're not standing in the way. We have three affordable housing units in the, in the mix here. I mean, there's a lot of good things that are happening with this development, so. I don't think any of us are saying that. So next week. Two discussions, one, get this resolved and then moving forward, what is the process?
Okay.
And that we're not going to keep Mike Sweeney here all night with us figuring out our process. I mean, that's, you know, and I, we, we appreciate you coming out again. Thank you very much for coming. All right, any other comments, questions? We're going to close it out. It's exactly seven o'clock. All right, fish, the public hearing is officially closed. Thank you all for coming. Seven PM adjournment, I have a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Christina's second, Robin. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.